Please join me in honoring our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Here.
Commissioner Black.
Here.
Commissioner Jordan.
Here.
Commissioner P.
Here.
Commissioner Cook.
Here.
Commissioner Jernigan.
Here.
Commissioner Farley.
Here.
Commissioner Phillips.
Here.
Commissioner Sandlin.
Commissioner Turner.
Here.
Commissioner Allen.
Here.
Commissioner Stevens.
Here.
Commissioner Jordan.
Here.
Commissioner Baum.
Here.
Commissioner Coggan.
Present.
Commissioner Young.
Here.
Commissioner Phillips.
Present.
Commissioner McAdoo.
Here.
Commissioner Ely.
Here.
Commissioner Gooch.
Commissioner Serrino.
Yes.
Nineteen present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. You have before you a copy of the minutes of the last meeting, I believe. Do we have a motion?
No vote.
Mr. Farley, in a second, from Commissioner Turner. Do you want to have any corrections or additions? If not, all of you in favor of that, then please say aye. Any opposed, thank you very much. Next, we have a resolution of recognition for Ms. Claudia Smith, Central Magnet School, the state individual cross-country chairman, and we're going to call on Commissioner Young to present this resolution. And we'll ask Ms. Smith and her family and her principal, Mr. Ash, to come forward, please.
Good evening. I've got a resolution of recognition for Claudia Smith. Whereas congratulations goes to Central Magnet Schools' Claudia Smith for winning the individual cross-country class AAA state championship with a time of 1857 on November 2nd, 2013. And whereas, in addition to being a star athlete, Claudia has maintained a 4.0 GPA. She's also made a 34 on her ACT. And whereas, we express our sincere congratulations to Claudia's parents, Colleen and Roger Smith, for out-there encouragement, none of this would have been possible. And also, congratulations goes to her coaches, Alan Nichols and John Wooton, and Central Magnet's principal, Dr. John Ash. And whereas, we commend Claudia for her dedication and commitment, which made this championship possible, and for bringing this fine publicity to our community. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that we extend this resolution of recognition to Central Magnet School student Claudia Smith for her achievements, resolved this 17th day of April, 2014. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Commissioner Jordan, and Phillips, and many, many others second that motion. All of you in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Well, all of us would just like to say, Claudia, that you've been blessed with many
talents and abilities, you've been blessed with wonderful parents, and you have used those talents and abilities. And this is pretty remarkable, 4.0 to 34, so you're what gives us hope for the future of this country. Thank you very much.
(laughter)
Okay, next is public comments. Mr. Donald Todd.
My name is Donald Todd, and I live at 633 Buck Lane. A welcome return to citizen self-rule. For many years, people who love America's Constitution have been suspicious of how big government increasingly has violated two of our basic freedoms, which are granted to us in the Bible, namely, the citizen's constitutional right to maintain control of their own private property, and likewise, keep the ability to prevent local and state governments from using public money for private gain. A property owner should have the right to vote in a referendum opposing coercive annexation of his land, especially when the city intends to impose excessively expensive regulations. For the past several years, our state has not permitted a referendum in this case. The reason for that policy originates from President Nixon's executive orders in 1969 and 1972, which implemented metro or regional government policies. These are policies which remove the power of self-rule. In other words, metro and the TML are using socialistic methods to control the lives and ambitions of all Americans. However, the Tennessee Legislature recently adopted House Bill 2371, which will outlaw forced annexation and will require a referendum. With Governor Haslam's signature last Tuesday, this bill became a law. This is a victory for citizen self-rule. Next year, Senate Bill 1877 will be reintroduced. It will, in effect, repeal a Tennessee statute Title V, Chapter 8, and Section 301, which illegally authorizes unnecessary investments of surplus revenue. If this state law is not repealed, it will continue to violate the terms of a federal law Title 18, which stipulates that it is illegal for public funds to be used for private gain. There is an example of how this federal law might have been violated. On one day in 2010, records in the state treasury show that almost $14 billion of public money or surplus revenue was invested in many banks for their private gain. We need to determine if metro-type agencies are recommending these investments, which benefit only the bankers. Back in 1971, in a letter written by Dallas County Judge Lou Sterrett, he alluded to corrupt metro-type policies when he stated, quote, "We all realize today the federal government is bankrupting every big metropolitan area in America," unquote, "by returning to citizen self-rule. Our citizens could eliminate financial mismanagement." Thank you.
Next speaker is Ms. Susan Allen.
I live at 2031 Nelson Lane in Murfreesboro, and I just wanted to take a little time tonight to thank you for what sometimes on the face seem like the small things that you, as our government leaders, do. I watched the Steering Committee meeting on YouTube from the other night, and I just wanted to tell you that I think the Steering Committee showed wisdom in their selection of Donald Jernigan to fulfill the remaining three months of Helen Blankenship's unexpired term that will end in 2016. And I think it was a wise choice for three reasons, a couple of which were discussed at the meeting. Because Mr. Jernigan has such a long and impressive history of service to the county schools. Because during budget time that we're in now, the school board needs a person there who has experience with the process. And because Mr. Jernigan does not intend to be a candidate in August in the special election to fill the remaining two years of Mrs. Blankenship's term, his appointment will assure a balanced playing field among the candidates vying for the privilege of serving on the school board. So I thank you once again for your thoughtfulness in all that you do. Thank you.
I thank you. The next agenda item is elections and confirmations. Mr. Coggan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, we have five items to deal with tonight. First is election of notaries. You've received a copy of those notaries. Mr. Chairman, I move for their approval.
Second, Commissioner Jernigan. All right, any discussion on that? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, thank you.
Next, we need to fill vacancy on the school board to fill the unexpired term of Ms. Helen Blankenship. That term, her school board term, is set to expire of August of 2016. Those commission districts represented in her district is Commission District 4, 6, and 7. However, I do like to point out that there will be a special election this August of 2014. Steering recommends for approval, Mr. Donald Jernigan. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Black and Jordan, and Mr. McAdoo. Any discussion on that? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, thank you very much.
Next, we need to announce a citizen vacancy on the Emergency Communications District Board, and then also announce a vacancy for an alternate position on the Equalization Board. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Coggan. All right, we don't have any unfinished business. There is a report by our Purchasing Committee, and do we have a motion to approve the monthly report from the Purchasing Committee? Mrs. Cook, do we have a second? Commissioner Schaefer, any questions on that report? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, thank you. Next, we will start our Budget, Finance, and Investment Committee report. Commissioner Ely. And we'll remind each other that we certainly won't be able to finish all this before 6:30, and we will take a break somewhere at the appropriate time.
Item K2A, the General Fund Budget Amendments. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the general fund be amended as follows. From the property assessor and the assessor portion of the budget, increased expenditures, other contracted services, $22,000. The reappraisal part of the budget, decreased expenditures for travel, $22,000. From OIT, we have increased expenditures, data processing personnel, $14,000, and the related benefits. And from the mayor's budget, decreased expenditures, secretary, $14,000, and the related benefits. From pet adoption and wellness services, increased revenue of contributions and gifts, $1,000. Increased expenditures for other supplies and materials, $1,000. Increased revenues from contributions and gifts of $885,000 and $2,500 in donations. Increased expenditures for drugs and medical supplies, $2,885,000, and office supplies, $500. From the sheriff's department, increased revenue, insurance recovery, $10,257,000. Increased expenditures, motor vehicles, $10,275,000. Increased revenue of operating transfers of $40,000. Increased expenditures for overtime pay, $33,230,000, and the related benefits. I will also alert you, Commissioners, this amendment is from the drug fund, and we will amend the drug fund later in item K2D to reflect this. Jail, increased expenditures, transfer other than students, $12,000. Sheriff, decreased expenditures for maintenance and repair of vehicles, $12,000. Resolved this 17th day of April, 2014. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Sandlin. Any questions or discussion? There being none, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty yes, motion passes.
Item K2C, Special Purpose Fund Budget Amendment. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the special purpose fund be amended as follows. Sheriff's Department, increased revenue from asset forfeiture, $9,824,000. Increased expenditures for other equipment, $9,824,000. Resolved this 17th day of April, 2014. I move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Second from Commissioner Serrino. Any questions, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty yes, motion passes.
Item K2D, the Drug Fund Budget Amendment. And this is the amendment that I said would reflect back to that general fund amendment for overtime. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the drug fund be amended as follows. Sheriff's Department, increased revenue, sale of equipment, $12,000, and restricted for public safety, $28,000 is a decrease, and then an increased expenditures of transfer to other funds, $40,000. Resolved this 17th day of April, 2014. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
And a second from Commissioner Jernigan. Any questions on that? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes, please.
Twenty yes, motion passes.
Item K2E, a Highway Fund Budget Amendment. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the highway fund be amended as follows. Administration, increased expenditures for natural gas, $10,000. Highway and bridge maintenance, decreased expenditure, crushed stone, $10,000. Resolved this 17th day of April, 2014. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Sandlin. Any questions or discussion? There being none, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty yes, motion passes.
Item K2F, the Industrial Economic Development Fund Budget Amendment. This amendment reflects changes in the expected funds from the airport authority. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the industrial economic development fund be amended as follows. Decreased revenue, interest earned, $7,945,000. Decreased and assigned for other operations, $7,945,000. Resolved this 17th day of April, 2014. I move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
And a second from Commissioner Cook. All right, any questions on this? Please cast your votes.
Anyone who did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes, please.
Twenty yes, motion passes.
Item K2G, an initial resolution authorizing $35.8 million general obligation bond issue. Commissioners, this resolution notifies the public of Rutherford County's intent to borrow. It will be advertised in a local newspaper, and I will read the initial caption. Initial resolution authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $35,800,000 of general obligation bonds of Rutherford County, Tennessee. And the first paragraph explains what will be covered in this borrowing, and I will call attention to the second paragraph, that short paragraph that's only two lines long, and also alert you to the fact that we are repealing some $2.5 million in general obligation bonds for the airport purposes, and that will be reflected in the next resolution, or the second resolution. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
And a second, Commissioner Jordan. Anyone have any questions on this? Mr. Sandlin.
It's kind of stuck there, sorry about that. It, um, this is where we've got the laundry list, so to speak, of the things that we're going to bar. It is?
But that will not be behind this one. I think that is behind H. It's behind item H, if you want to see the list, Commissioner Sandlin.
What I was alluding to is that the property on the, I guess, the D&amp;J building, since we don't have that all wrapped up in a nice, neat little package yet, I was wanting to separate that issuance.
Mrs. Ely says that might be better separated on the next one.
Save that discussion for the next resolution.
Okay, is it not part of this $35 million, though?
It is a part of the 35. It's all of that included.
Well, there's a, and the reason why I say that is, you know, we don't have all the results back on the dirt work, the Phase 2 and all that stuff, or everything that we're doing. It's not a wrapped-up package. I know we mentioned, or the mayor mentioned in budget, that if we don't do it, then we won't spend the money. And I understand that, but I don't want to bar the money neither, if we don't have that in place. And I'm for a lot of these other projects, I'm actually for this project, but it's not in a nice, neat little package yet. It may be heading that way, and it may be there very soon unless the mayor can shed some light on it tonight or something, but...
That $5 million that is in here, you know, that's the proposed amount that we would use for the judicial building, most all of that money is to be, is for the design of the building, the judicial building itself. So any of that money we don't use for that design of that building, or the small amount of money of that $5 million, roughly $600,000 that we may spend for the D&amp;J property, will just be used for the furtherance of the completion of the judicial building at some point in time. So it's not like we're not going to use it for that purpose. It might not be used for that parcel of property. That's all this would, all we would be saying here in this particular case. But anyway, it is in this $35.8 million, yes. A small part of the $5 million could be used for that purchase of that property.
Because we're looking at about $2 million, as we say, turnkey on to the parking garage, the purchase, the cleanup, and the building of the parking garage.
None of that money is in here for that purpose. I mean, there's $5 million, most of that money is for the design of the judicial building.
So none of this is for the D&amp;J purchase, or the...
Less than $1 million of it would be for the purpose of the D&amp;J property.
Well, I know, well, the $650,000 or whatever that number is, but not even the actual building of the parking garage, then?
No, the actual building of the parking garage has not yet been any money appropriated for that purpose. All of that will have to take place after you design the parking garage and the design of the judicial building, then we will go forward then later, maybe a couple of years from now, or almost that long, before we actually appropriate money for the construction of...
Well, it was in on that list that I looked at, and that's what threw me off then. So, and I can flip back over here and take a look at that right quick, but I mentioned that in budget, and I was wanting to...
The reason that has been done, in the event we don't spend all of the $5 million for design, let's say a million dollars is left over, then we've got the authority to use that money we didn't use for design or purchase of land to go forward with actual construction later. This is just the mechanics of the way they've structured this bond resolution. Okay, we do have a motion and a second, I believe. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Other discussion? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty yes, motion passes.
Item K2H, a resolution authorizing $33.2 million general obligation bonds. Fellow commissioners, we're still dealing with the same borrowing. We have just repealed $2.5 million for airport purposes, and that is the difference in these two figures. And yes, behind this resolution, you do have a list of projects that will be included in this borrowing. A resolution authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $33,200,000 in aggregate principal amount in one or more series of general obligation bonds of Rutherford County, Tennessee, for the purpose of financing certain public works projects and sharing proceeds as required by law, making provision for the issuance, sale, and payment of said bonds, establishing the terms thereof and the disposition of proceeds therefrom, and providing for the levy of taxes for the payment of principal of, premium if any, and interest on the bonds. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Have a second. Commissioner Serrino. Now, discussion? All right, then, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty yes, motion passes.
Item K2I, a resolution authorizing $2.6 million general obligations bond for the airport authority, approving the issuance of $4.4 million airport revenue bonds of the airport authority, approving a loan to the airport authority, amending the county's debt management policy, and repealing a prior resolution. A resolution authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $2,600,000 in aggregate principal amount in one or more series of general obligation bonds federally taxable of Rutherford County, Tennessee, for the purpose of making a loan to the Smyrna Rutherford County Airport Authority, making provision for the issuance, sale, and payment of said bonds, establishing the terms thereof and the disposition of proceeds therefrom, providing for the levy of taxes for the payment of principal of, premium if any, and interest on the bonds, approving the issuance of not to exceed $4,400,000 airport revenue bonds of the Smyrna Rutherford County Airport Authority, approving a loan to the airport authority, and amending the county's debt management policy, and repealing a prior resolution. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Stevens. Now, any questions on this? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty yes, motion passes.
Thank you very much. Now we'll take a break from our Budget, Finance, and Investment Committee report and return and have our public hearing. We have one rezoning request tonight, 14-8006, on behalf of Gravy General Partnership located at 5555 Miller Road. The existing zoning of this is residential medium density and an employment and activity center, and the proposed zoning is residential medium density, .9 acres, and employment and activity center, 1.15 acres, in combination thereof. So, Mr. Demossi, you may tell us about this project.
Yes, Mayor Burgess, thank you, and thank you. Good evening, members of the Commission, and Mayor Burgess. This property was originally rezoned back to EAC, Employment Activity Center, back in October of 2013 for the use of a mulch facility. Since that time, a site plan has been submitted to the Planning Commission...
All right then, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty yes, motion passes.
Item K-2I, a resolution authorizing two-point-six million general obligations bond for the Airport Authority, approving the issuance of four-point-four million airport revenue bonds of the Airport Authority, approving a loan to the Airport Authority, amending the county's debt management policy, and repealing a prior resolution. A resolution authorizing the issuance of not to exceed two million six hundred thousand dollars in aggregate principal amount in one or more series of general obligation bonds federally taxable of Rutherford County, Tennessee, for the purpose of making a loan to the Smyrna Rutherford County Airport Authority, making provision for the issuance, sale, and payment of said bonds, establishing the terms thereof and the disposition of proceeds therefrom, providing for the levy of taxes for the payment of principal of, premium if any, and interest on the bonds, approving the issuance of not to exceed four million four hundred thousand airport revenue bonds of the Smyrna Rutherford County Airport Authority, approving a loan to the Airport Authority, and amending the county's debt management policy, and repealing a prior resolution. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Stevens. Now, any questions on this? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty yes, motion passes.
Thank you very much. Now we'll take a break from our Budget Finance and Investment Committee report and return and have our public hearing. We have one rezoning request tonight, fourteen dash A zero zero six, on behalf of Gravy General Partnership located at fifty-five fifty-five Miller Road. The existing zoning of this is residential medium density and an employment and activity center. And the proposed zoning is residential medium density, point-nine acres, and employment and activity center, one-point-one-five acres, in combination thereof. So, Mr. Demossi, you may tell us about this project.
Yes, Mayor Burgess, thank you, and thank you. Good evening, members of the commission and Mayor Burgess. This property was originally rezoned back to EAC, Employment Activity Center, back in October of 2013 for the use of a mulch facility. Since that time, a site plan has been submitted to the Planning Commission and approved at their January twenty-seven, 2014 meeting. It was discovered during a staff view that the portion of the property for the development was not rezoned EAC, as the applicant had originally thought. And then there was a portion of adjacent property that was rezoned to the EAC, but should have remained zoned for residential use. When this was discussed at the Planning Commission, the Planning Commission just asked that the applicant go ahead and do another rezoning application to kind of clean this up, to make the zoning match the property that he had indeed purchased. So really, that's all this is doing. There's a portion of the property that was zoned incorrectly, EAC, that they're going back to the RM zone, which was originally zoned of the property. And they're taking a portion that's still zoned RM and zoning it for the EAC, which will, at that point, make the property that he purchased all zoned the same. So we consider this more of a housekeeping matter. The Planning Commission did have a public hearing on this. There wasn't really any discussion on it, and it did, was recommended, approved by unanimous vote. So I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions on Mr. Demossi before we have the public hearing? All right, thank you. Stand by just a moment. We will then declare the public hearing open. If there's anyone here that wishes to speak for or against this particular request, now is your time for an opportunity to come forward and make your statements. Anyone here wishing to speak for or against this request? I don't see anyone that wishes to speak. Therefore, we'll declare the public hearing closed. And do we have a motion concerning approval of this rezoning request? Mr. Jernigan made a motion approved, second by Mr. Farley. Does anyone else have any questions or discussion? All right then, all of you in favor of this, please say aye. Are there any opposed? Thank you very much, that passed. Now, Mrs. Ely, we may continue the report.
We are ready for item K-2J, a resolution authorizing removal of co-pay at Med Point Clinics. Whereas a fifty-dollar co-pay was established in 2008 for employees on the HRA medical plan that utilized the Med Point Clinic for non-preventative care. And whereas this co-pay was established due to the fact there was not a premium charge to the employee on the HRA medical plan. Whereas a premium is now charged on the HRA medical plan, and to encourage the employee to use the lower-cost option of the Med Point Clinic, the co-pay should be removed. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the fifty-dollar co-pay at Med Point Clinic for employees on the HRA medical plan be removed effective July one, 2014. Resolve this seventeenth day of April, 2014. I move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Mayor Black seconded, and others. Any questions? All right, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty yes, motion passes.
Item K-2K, a resolution renewing EAP provider effective June one, 2014. Whereas Life Services currently provides the Employee Assistant Program, EAP, for county employees. Whereas the contract with Life Services is expiring May thirty-one, 2014, and proposals were requested and received from multiple vendors, with Life Services providing the best financial offering and the broadest range of services. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the EAP service contract be renewed with Life Services effective June one, 2014, according to the schedule attached here too as Exhibit One, and incorporated herein by reference as if set forth herein at length verbatim. And that the county mayor and all other appropriate officials of Rutherford County, Tennessee, be and are hereby authorized to execute for and on behalf of Rutherford County the contract with Life Services. Resolve this seventeenth day of April, 2014. I move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
And a second from Commissioner Sandlin. Any questions? All right then, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Nineteen yes, one no, motion passes.
Item K-2L, a resolution authorizing future wellness program and associated fees. Whereas in August 2013, a wellness initiative was implemented for 2014 to encourage a healthier Rutherford County employee population, and to try to help control premiums and claims experience. And whereas the wellness initiative is proposed to continue into the future years of 2015, sixteen, and seventeen, by adding different features to the initiative for employees to participate in and creating fees for those employees who choose not to participate. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the wellness initiative be implemented and fees assessed according to the schedule attached here too as Exhibit One, and incorporated herein by reference as if set forth herein at length verbatim. Resolve this seventeenth day of April, 2014. I move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Second, Commissioner Jordan. Commissioner P.
Since we're fixing to get into voting on some rates, I want to go ahead and declare my conflict of interest. Because my wife is an employee, excuse me, of Rutherford County School Board, I have a conflict of interest in the proposals about to be voted. However, I declare that my argument and my vote answer only to my conscience and to my obligation to my constituents and the citizens this body represents.
Commissioner Turner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to ask the clerk if she could, on the last one, my voting thing came out from the wire, so it declared me as a no vote. That's incorrect. I wanted to vote yes, and it swapped it. So I wanted to do that before we move forward here. I'm starting to get notoriously famous for this happening at this desk, but I'm trying to make sure it doesn't happen again. So I apologize, Ms. Croll. But if you could change that last vote to yes, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Without objection, we will ask the clerk to do that. And Mr. Robertson will make the appropriate changes in the technology so that it'll be recorded properly. All right, did anyone else need to read the statement that Mr. P. read? Is everyone else okay? So I just want to be sure I gave you an opportunity. Did we get a motion? We did get a motion in a second. All right, any other discussion? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Fifteen yes, five no, motion passes.
Item K-2M, a resolution authorizing a change to the vision coverage effective January one, 2015. Whereas vision coverage is currently a part of the medical plan for Rutherford County. And whereas the Affordable Care Act requires the out-of-pocket cost of all forms of coverage included with the medical plan to count toward total out-of-pocket costs. And whereas to keep the vision benefit out-of-pocket costs from rolling into the total medical out-of-pocket costs, the vision coverage should be a separate plan and have premium rates established for calendar year 2015. And whereas the premium rates for vision coverage for calendar year 2015 to be one-hundred percent employee-paid are: individual, four dollars sixty-three cents; employee spouse, nine dollars seventy-two cents; employee child, eight dollars fifty-seven cents; employee family, thirteen dollars forty-three cents. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that vision coverage become a separate plan, and the premium rates are adopted as outlined in the foregoing resolution for the 2015 calendar year. Resolve this seventeenth day of April, 2014. I move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Second from Commissioner Schaefer. Questions, discussion, Commissioner Farley.
Well, my understanding is this was included in our benefit package prior. We're bracketing it out now, and it's going to be employee-paid. Okay.
Like the dental piece is. Any other questions? All right, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Nineteen yes, zero no, one abstain, motion passes.
Item K-2N, a resolution authorizing dental rates effective January one, 2015. Whereas the current employee dental premium rates have been in effect for two years with no increase. And whereas utilization has increased over the last two years with increased cost to the plan. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the premium rates for the dental plan be increased by nine percent for the 2015 calendar year, according to the schedule attached here too as Exhibit One, and incorporated herein by reference as if set forth herein at length verbatim. Resolve this seventeenth day of April, 2014. I move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
And a second from Commissioner Jordan. Discussion? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Nineteen yes, one abstain, motion passes.
Item K-2O, a resolution authorizing health insurance premium rates for active employees and retirees effective January one, 2015. Whereas in an effort to generate sufficient revenue to cover the claims cost in the employee insurance fund, the following are premium rates for active employees and retirees effective January one, 2015. You have active employees on a co-pay plan, a deductible plan, and the HRA plan. Commissioners, you see the total premiums listed and the amount paid by Rutherford County. For the pre-sixty-five retirees, you have a co-pay plan and a deductible plan with the total premiums listed and the percentage paid by Rutherford County. Post-sixty-five retirees, both the grandfathered and the non-grandfathered group, with the total premiums listed and the amount paid by Rutherford County. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the health insurance rates for the active employees and retirees are adopted as outlined in the foregoing resolution effective January one, 2015. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Hey, we have a second, Commissioner Serino. Are there any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I need to read my conflict of interest. Because I am a retired employee of Rutherford County, I have a conflict of interest in the proposal about to be voted. However, I declare that my argument and my vote answer only to my conscience and to my obligation to my constituents and the citizens this body represents.
And Commissioner Serino? Commissioner Phillips?
As I'm an employee of Rutherford County, I have a conflict of interest in the proposal about to be voted. However, I declare that my argument and my vote answer only to my conscience and to my obligation to my constituents and the citizens this body represents.
Else? All right then, any questions or discussion? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Sixteen yes, three no, one abstain, motion passes.
Item K-2P, a resolution authorizing medical-only premium rates effective January one, 2015, for post-sixty-five retirees, non-grandfathered. Whereas there is not an established premium rate for post-sixty-five retirees, non-grandfathered, medical-only, non-pharmacy. And whereas there are currently no individuals that fit into this category, but should there be a need, the rates would already be established. Therefore, be it resolved that the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the premium rates for post-sixty-five retirees, non-grandfathered, medical-only, for the 2015 calendar year be adopted according to the schedule attached here too as Exhibit One, and incorporated herein by reference as if set forth herein at length verbatim. Resolve this seventeenth day of April, 2014. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second from Mr. Jeff Phillips. Any questions? All right, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Eighteen yes, two abstain, motion passes.
Item K-2Q, a resolution authorizing a continuous four-year reappraisal cycle and approval of the memorandum of understanding with the Tennessee Division of Property Assessments. Whereas Tennessee Code Annotated Section 67-5-1601 establishes a general six-year reappraisal for updating and equalizing property values for every county in Tennessee for property tax purposes. Whereas a six-year reappraisal program consists of an on-site review of each parcel of real property over a five-year period, followed by revaluation of all such property in the year following completion of the review period, and includes a current value updating during the third year of the review cycle and sales ratio studies during the second and fifth years of the review cycle. And whereas Tennessee Code Annotated Section 67-5-1601 provides that upon the submission of a plan by the assessor and upon approval of the State Board of Equalization, a reappraisal program may be completed by a continuous four-year cycle comprised of an on-site review of each real property over a three-year period, followed by revaluation of all such property in the year following completion of the review period. And whereas the county legislative body of Rutherford County understands that by approving such a four-year reappraisal cycle, a sales ratio study will be conducted during the second year of the review cycle, and the centrally assessed properties and commercial, industrial, tangible, personal property will be equalized by the sales ratio adopted by the State Board of Equalization. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commission, meeting in regular session on the seventeenth day of April, 2014, that pursuant to Tennessee Code Annotated Section 67-5-1601, reappraisal shall be accomplished in Rutherford County by a continuous four-year cycle beginning July one, 2014, comprised of an on-site review of each parcel of real property over a three-year period, followed by revaluation of all such property for tax year 2018, and that the county mayor and all other required officials of Rutherford County, Tennessee, be and are hereby authorized to sign any documents necessary related to this reappraisal cycle, adopted this seventeenth day of April, 2014. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second from someone, Mr. Schaefer. Questions, Mr. Farley?
What's the changes in this? Is this the way we're doing it now?
Yes, sir.
So there's really no changes?
No change.
So why, do we have to go this every year?
Every four years, the State Board of Equalization requires this.
Requires us to do a resolution, okay.
He's commissioned to update and submit a new plan. But it's the same plan.
I just want to make sure there weren't any changes. So, okay, thank you.
Other questions? All of you that are in favor of this then, please say aye. Are there any opposed? Thank you.
Item K-2R, a resolution approving an agreement for farmers' market for credit card and EBT processing. Whereas the farmers market at the Lane Agri Park currently accepts debit, credit, and electronic benefit transfer card transactions through an agreement approved October 2013. Whereas the farmers market wishes to terminate the previous agreement and enter into a contract with TSYS Merchant Solutions for Merchant Services. Therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that all appropriate officials of Rutherford County, Tennessee be and are hereby authorized to execute an agreement for merchant services with TSYS Merchant Solutions, a copy of the same being attached here too as Exhibit 1 and incorporated herein by reference as if set forth herein at length verbatim, to allow the farmers market at the Lane Agri Park to accept credit, debit, and EBT transactions. Resolved this 17th day of April 2014. I move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Second Commissioner Sandlin and someone else. But anyway, any questions on this? Please cast your votes, please.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty yes, motion passes.
Item K2S, a resolution approving State of Tennessee Teen Learning Grant Contract for Youth Services and Juvenile Court. Whereas Rutherford County desires to accept a grant contract from the Tennessee Department of Children's Services for the provision of community intervention services in the amount of $417,696, which provides pass-through funding for the Genesis Teen Learning Program. Therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor and any other appropriate officials of Rutherford County be and are here authorized to execute the grant contract with the State of Tennessee Department of Children's Services, a copy of the same being attached here too as Exhibit 1 and incorporated herein by reference as if set forth here at length verbatim, for the provision of community intervention services in the amount of $417,696, to provide pass-through funding to the Genesis Learning Center for the period beginning July 1, 2014, ending on June 30, 2015. Resolved this 17th day of April 2014. I move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
P. Questions or discussion? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty yes, motion passes.
Item K2T, a resolution approving a State of Tennessee Teen Tracks Grant Contract for Youth Services and Juvenile Court. Whereas Rutherford County desires to accept a grant contract from the Tennessee Department of Children's Services for the provision of community intervention services in the amount of $46,448, which provides pass-through funding for the Genesis Teen Tracks Program. Therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor and any other appropriate officials of Rutherford County be and are hereby authorized to execute a grant contract with the State of Tennessee Department of Children's Services, a copy of the same being attached here too as Exhibit 1 and incorporated herein by reference as if set forth herein at length verbatim, for the provision of community intervention services in the amount of $46,448, to provide pass-through funding to the Genesis Learning Center for the period beginning July 1, 2014, ending June 30, 2015. Resolved this 17th day of April 2014. I move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Second from Mr. Farley and others. Any questions? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty yes, motion passes.
Item K2U, a resolution to request unclaimed balance of accounts remitted to State Treasury under Unclaimed Property Act. Whereas Tennessee Code Annotated Section 66-29-102 and Section 66-29-123, as amended by Public Chapter 401, Acts of 1985, provide that a municipality or county in Tennessee may request payment for the unclaimed balance of funds reported and remitted by or on behalf of the local government and its agencies if it exceeds $100 less a proportionate share of the cost of administering the program. Whereas Rutherford County, Tennessee and/or its agencies have remitted unclaimed accounts to the State Treasurer in accordance with the Uniform Disposition of Unclaimed Property Act for the report year ending December 31, 2012. Whereas Rutherford County agrees to meet all the requirements of Tennessee Code Annotated Section 66-29-101 at SEC and to accept liability for future claims against accounts represented in funds paid to it and to submit an annual report of claims received on these accounts to the State Treasurer by September 1 each year. Whereas it is agreed that this local government will retain a sufficient amount to ensure prompt payment of allowed claims without deduction for administrative cost or service charge, and that the balance of funds will be deposited in this local government's general fund. Therefore be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Rutherford County, Tennessee, request that the State Treasurer to pay the unclaimed balance of funds remitted through the 2012 report year to it in accordance with the provisions of Tennessee Code Annotated Section 66-29-121. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Right, and a second from someone on our Budgeting Committee, Commissioner P. or Jordan and Ms. Cook. Any questions about this? All right, all of you in favor of this, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you.
Item K2B, a resolution approving relax-and-ride contract with Regional Transportation Authority. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor be authorized to execute a contract with the Regional Transportation Authority, a copy of the same being attached here too as Exhibit 1 and incorporated herein by reference as if set forth herein at length verbatim, for the provision of certain grant-funded transportation services for a period beginning July 1, 2014 and ending June 30, 2015 in the amount of Resolved this 17th day of April 2014. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second Commissioner Cook. Any questions or discussion?
Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Schaefer.
Is there a increase with this from the present year to next year?
Yes, sir. It's a little over $3,000 increase. All right, any other questions? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Excuse me, Mr.?
I just noticed that Ms. Ely just-
I don't, excuse me, let me get a second first. I don't, do I have a sec?
Yes.
Did I have a second, Mr.?
Cook.
Or Ms. Cook, all right. Excuse me, go right ahead, Mr.? Is this not having anything to do with this one?
No.
Okay, excuse me. All right then, please cast your votes on the relax-and-ride resolution then.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty yes, motion passes.
Okay, now Commissioner Jordan.
I'd just like to say that Ms. Ely just read 22 resolutions, some of them as much as a page long. I don't know what we're going to do come September when she's not with us. I just think we ought all give her a round of applause for reading all that much.
Yes, too. Thank you very, very much, Mr. Jordan, for reminding us of that. She does an excellent, excellent job. Okay, give me one second to sort of get caught back up here. I'll do that one later. All right, Mr. McAdoo, come forward. And while Mr. McAdoo is coming forward, Mr. Sandlin, let me make a little bit of a preamble statement. I've had a little discussion with him about this. This is about our D&amp;J property. And we signed a purchase agreement on February 13, and the D&amp;J ownership, they signed it on February 24. We had a 60-day period of review, due diligence. And during our due diligence, we have discovered there is one tank there that needs addressing, removal, and remediation. And the D&amp;J property owners are taking that responsibility. They have engaged another firm called Enscape, E-N-S-C-A-P-E, to evaluate that, take the tank out, do whatever it needs to do to be sure it's cleaned up properly. But we don't have enough time for all of that to happen in our 60-day period, which would expire on April 24. So they have been very willing and cooperative to give us at least 60 more days past that time so that they can do their work and we can determine if that point in time, if we're satisfied with the remediation that's been done, and then move forward. So that's what Mr. McAdoo is going to present here. It's a very, very abbreviated First Amendment to our purchase agreement so that they'll have time to do their work to remediate this problem, and then we will see if we're satisfied then and if we need to move forward.
Thank you, Mayor.
McAdoo, we'll let him make his little resolution, and you can-
I was going to say, thank you, Mayor. That's basically all I was looking for at the very beginning, is to make sure we're buying a piece of property that is clean and ready for us to take over and build a garage that's going to last us for years and years, so, thank you.
All right, so Mr. McAdoo then, I apologize for preempting your little discussion, but I thought that might help us a little bit. So if you would proceed then with your resolution.
Resolution, whereas the First Amendment to Purchase Agreement attached here too as Exhibit 1 and incorporated herein by reference as if set forth at length verbatim between Rutherford County, Tennessee and Pacific and Southern Company Incorporated, amends the purchase and sale agreement dated February 24, 2014, entered by the parties, and whereas it is in the best interest of the citizens of Rutherford County for the county to execute said First Amendment to Purchase Agreement. Now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor and other appropriate officials be and they are hereby are authorized to enter into and execute for and on behalf of Rutherford County, Tennessee, the attached First Amendment to Purchase Agreement with Pacific and Southern Company Incorporated. Resolved this 17th day of April 2014, and I so move.
Second, Ms. Cook. Now any further questions? Then all of you in favor of that, please say aye. Are there any opposed? Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. McAdoo.
So, I mean, I'm clear with it, I'm good with it, but so if something happens in between there, then we may have to extend it again if there is a hiccup of any sort.
If they're not able to completely satisfy the remediation of that, then either we'll have to say no, or we'll say, give us more time till you have an opportunity to do just that.
So the dirt's going to be checked too as far as a contaminated part there? Okay, good. What about our asbestos that we talked about?
The asbestos is there. It's a limited cost, but that would be our responsibility. We knew that going in.
Okay, that's part of the purchase and our cleanup there.
Yeah, we'll clean that up. It's very limited, it's just some floor tile. Okay, anything else there? Let's see then, we're ready to move on. There's no report from Public Safety, and excuse me, Mr. Jeff Jordan, there was no report from the Health and Education Committee, so, but I skipped right over that, so forgive me. Now we're ready for the Public Works and Planning Committee report, and there are three resolutions, and we're going to call on Commissioner Turner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, for Resolution K6A. Whereas the attached Local Agency Program Agreement Number 140030, buy-in between the State of Tennessee acting buy-in through its Department of Transportation in Rutherford County, provides for installation of a traffic signal at State Road 2, intersection at Dilton-Mankin Road, LM 3.573. A copy of said agreement between being attached here too as Exhibit 1 and incorporated herein at length verbatim as if set forth herein. Whereas it is in the best interest of the citizens of Rutherford County for the county to enter into said agreement with the State of Tennessee. Now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor and any other required county officials be and they are hereby authorized to enter into and execute for and on behalf of Rutherford County, Tennessee, Local Agency Program Agreement Number 140030, with the State of Tennessee Department of Transportation, for installation and maintenance of a traffic signal at State Road 2, intersection at Dilton-Mankin Road, LM 3.573, according to the terms and provisions contained in said contract. Resolved this 17th day of April 2014. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Pete. Any question or discussion on these?
I've got one quick question.
Excuse me, Mr., yes, sir, Mr. Young.
Is that not inside the city, Manchester Highway? The road is inside the city? Why wouldn't the city, I'm just curious, that was discussed, or?
I don't remember, I don't think-
Because Joe B. Jackson's further out, and the roadway is inside the city of Murfreesboro. I mean, if it's in the city, shouldn't the city-
Yeah, I don't think, in the committee meeting, I don't believe that came up and that-
You can see the actual subdivisions and street addresses, and it's a-
If the street light's on Manchester Highway, which is in the city, the city should be obligated, not the county. I'm, that's just, I don't know.
That was not, in committee, it was not brought up. If that's what you were asking, it was not, it's in the county?
It's in the county, Mr.-
Manchester Highway should be in the-
Dilton-Mankin Road.
Yeah, well, I'll check, I think he said, I think they said-
Dilton-Mankin is off the Manchester Highway.
It is off the Manchester Highway, but Dilton-Mankin's in the county.
But Manchester Highway is in the city.
Yeah. But we've done this, it's some intersections like this before, and it's, to improve that intersection there, we're willing, we believe, to take the responsibility for the maintenance if the state provides all the other cost. Okay, Mr. Schaefer?
What will this wind up costing us whenever it gets started by the states, the state?
It's not going to cost us anything except when this light is put in. If the light bulb needs to be changed, or if there's some malfunction there, it would be our responsibility to correct and maintain it.
On other things with the lights that we have around, do we have something to repair them? Do we have an agreement with somebody like the city of Murfreesboro?
The city of Murfreesboro maintains all of those lights for us, yes, and we do pay them. Sometimes it's not much a year, sometimes it's a few thousand dollars a year. But it's an ongoing, we've got a few of those locations, yes.
It's a, and they just charge us the actual cost of repairs and put something in for labor?
They use a subcontractor to do that, and then we pay them, reimburse for the subcontractor's work. All right, did we get a motion and second on that, Mr. Pete? I can't, I think we did.
Yes.
All right, any other questions or discussion? All of you in favor of that then, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Resolution K6B, to approve drainage easements. Whereas pursuant to the Private Act authorizing the Rutherford County Highway Commission and Superintendent, to work on public drainage easements and provide for the maintenance of public drainage easements, requires the county legislative bodies to establish an official list of recognized public drainage easements, the attached Exhibit 1, or the easements recommended by the Planning Department. Whereas Public Works and Planning Committee has approved the list of public drainage easements as submitted by the Planning Department. Now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county commission approves as additional public drainage easements, the attached list Exhibit 1, as submitted by the Planning Department in accordance with Tennessee Code Annotated 54-903 and 54-904. These public drainage easements, in addition to those previously approved, shall be the only public drainage easements with which shall be worked upon by the Rutherford County Highway Department. Resolved this 17th day of April 2014. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second from Commissioner Schaefer. Excuse me. Oh, can we go ahead with this one? Okay, all right. Any discussion on this drainage easement resolution? All right, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you.
This next one, excuse me, is the resolution to adopt the Building Codes K6C.
Oh, okay, excuse me.
I'm just going to read the beginning portion of that to honor the time here. Resolution to adopt the family of building codes relating to inspection activities of Rutherford County, Tennessee enforcement of building provisions as provided in said codes. Whereas it is the desire of Rutherford County, Tennessee, to adopt an updated family of building-related codes, and whereas the provisions of Tennessee Code Annotated 65-20-101 authorize such action by Rutherford County, Tennessee, and whereas the adoption of these codes is done to facilitate proper inspection activities by Rutherford County, Tennessee, related to construction and maintenance of buildings within the unincorporated boundaries of said county, and within these incorporated municipalities where the municipality has not otherwise adopted a minimum building code respecting the same subject matters provided in Tennessee Code Annotated 65-20-106, and relating to public safety and health and general welfare. Now therefore be it resolved by the county commissioners as follows, and then there's, as it's laid out before you, nine pages, I think, seven, actually six or seven pages. Be it resolved, this resolution shall take effect and be enforced from after its passage to public welfare requiring it. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
And a second, Commissioner Farley. Now are there any questions or discussion? All right, did we do that? Okay, Mr. Cook. We have a motion second to adopt and update all of these codes, and we're doing this, I think, pretty concurrently with all of our other jurisdictions in our county to be compatible and on pace with them. If there's no other discussion, then you're ready to vote. All in favor of this, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very, very much. Thank you, Mr. Turner. There is no report from our steering legislative and governmental committee. Is there any other business to come before this body? Commissioner Pete?
This Saturday, Kitterell Volunteer Fire Department's having a hand breakfast. That'll be the 19th, from 6 to 10. We'll invite everybody out. Thanks.
Commissioner Farley?
Talk about Commissioner Ely again. I think everybody may be aware, Commissioner Ely, I think, is going to be receiving an award at where she's volunteered with Journeys, and I just want to tell you, congratulations, and well-deserved.
Commissioner Cook?
Oh, Mrs. Cook reminded us that early voting started yesterday, and will continue through May 1 or thereabouts. So, yes, it's important for all of our citizens to express their right, and I hope they'll consider it an opportunity and a duty. Any other business to come before this body? If not, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.